All right. I will call this meeting of the Kensington Elementary School Board to order at 6:02. A non-public session can be called at any time in accordance with Chapter 91A 32, A, B, C, D, E, or I. And I'm gonna start with our land acknowledgement statement. This Kensington School Board meeting is located on Endakina, which is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabenaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land and waterways and the Alnabak, the people who have stewarded Endakina throughout the generations. We will teach others to know and honor Native Americans. And that is the statement that was brought to us by the third graders. And I will open a public input right now at 6:03. So normally we would do the minutes, but on our agenda is Mr. Andres Manja, who has a baby at home. So would you like to just hop on up to the front? Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. So I'm here just to give a couple of updates with, you know, DIJ. So one update is last week, we actually had opportunity to, and we, Chris Andruski and David Ryan got the opportunity to present at a national conference in San Antonio on implementing and sustaining diverse equity inclusion justice in white school districts, which was pretty awesome to be part of that session. Not many sessions like it at the conference, which I think was awesome. They interviewed us after and so on. So that was a really good topic and opportunity around DIJ. Basically talk about the work we're doing here in our district and how DIJ got started, the community input, and the DIJ teams at the schools and so on. So that was nice. Another update is, you know, last month, K to 12 leaders got to go through a DIJ workshop to learn about bias. And then this week, they got to participate in a facilitator's workshop and learn how to facilitate conversations and dialogue around with the equity lens. And next month, for March 14 PD Day, the In Service Day, all staff get to be part of an opportunity to go through that training as well and learn about DIJ. And our leaders want to be helping facilitate that space, which is pretty awesome. Seeing that go through our district. We do have, I just came from a DIJ Chairs Committee meeting. We meet monthly, so all the DIJ Chairs are members from all the DIJ committees that the schools have. And through that, through that meeting, a monthly meeting, we do share learning with each other to build the capacity around DIJ in our schools. We're also working on goals and strategies for DIJ for that SAU district, SUCD district, which is pretty, pretty nice that we're working on that. And that has different people. It can be a teacher, it can be a counselor, it can be a principal, assistant principal from the schools, all part of this team. And we're representing all the schools, which is pretty nice. For our, for the Kensington district, our people are Becky and then also Kelsey, the counselor, which is.
Oh, yes, or and so like that.
Yeah, yeah, also.
Substitute member when schedules go mine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, 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 sorry, sorry. So yeah, that's, that's pretty awesome to have them there. And what we learned there, going and bringing it to the schools, or just providing resources. Sometimes at those meetings, it's just them talking about what they're dealing with at their schools and what activities they do, what program, what PDs, and they share that knowledge from each other to bring to each other's schools. And then my, you know, work here in Kensington is also working with Becky, you know, just serving as a resource, you know, as for any material that's needed for PD or questions teachers have. And also, you know, dealing with incidents and so on, bias, discrimination, just being, you know, a listening ear and a thought partner on how to do this work. So that's what we've been doing. And all the work that, you know, I've been focusing on and we've been focusing on is how to build capacity in our schools for others to do this work. So it doesn't just fall, you know, on one person, you know, sustaining DIJ work in our schools. So, but that's, that's the great work. That's my update.
That's great. I have a few. The, the, is there a way for us to see the presentation you guys did down in Texas? I would love to have that available. I think that would be really interesting. So I'm just trying to get like a really clear idea of how, because these are such huge concepts and i- in some cases, brand new ways of thinking for, for so many of us. So, and, and, and with elementary school kids, they're so young, which is great to start this now if it hasn't already been started in the home, you know. So I'm, I'm, what, what is the plan in our school for, like, are we, are we updating the materials in the library? Are we integrating lessons about, you know, like, like people from diverse backgrounds into our lessons? Like, not just racial diversity, but, you know, people with disabilities, people even from the LGBTQ spectrum, you know, all of that stuff. How, how is, what is the actual, what are the actual changes that are being done?
D all of the above.
Okay.
Yeah, and I would think that some, some teachers are more ready for that than others, which is totally fine. As you said, it's new concepts, people are learning this. And, and part of it too is like, you know, you're teaching the same stuff. You're just using other stories, you have representation of those identities. You're telling stories of resilience instead of victimization. You're talking about a story from your, so it is happening and people are moving slowly. Again, that's, that's what it takes, you know. And some teachers are leading it and other teachers can, oh, they did that and it works, you know. So yeah, that's how the, the work is being done. And I know you provided some examples.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I think that some of the things are in my principles report too, but like that representation piece has been key. I know Sheri's been super thoughtful about some of the new books that she's brought into the library and classroom teachers have been thoughtful about other books that they're bringing in. Again, same topics maybe that we've been teaching, but it's the representation in the books may be a little different than what we've had before. So I do think that, you know, we're making those thoughtful decisions about different resources that are coming in. And like you said, not just race, but ability and, you know, just all kinds of people represented.
Becky and Andres, are those, are those coming through like regular meetings that you might have to talk through, you know, ideas and how you can try and implement, you know, better practices across schools?
It, it, it's coming through resources. So if I find resources, you know, I share it with educators, like, you know, I share with the principal, like, hey, share this with your educators. This is cool books or cool discussion guides or how to talk about certain identities.
Okay, but that's, that's more like a, like an ad hoc type touch point, right?
Yeah. And, and the, the teachers have access to me. So teachers who do need support, they do reach out and they have that conversation. And like, like the DIJ committee that I spoke about earlier, that's the purpose of that, is to provide that support so that those DIJ committee members can go and provide that to their, to their educators at, in the building. You know, like what kind of discussion will happen? Oh, they, they actually did this exact, they had another school, I don't know, tried out here. They did this PD, they had this kind of conversation. They used this lesson in the classroom and that's, that's what's happening. And that started just by schools giving updates to each other. And then people let, wow, I really liked how you all did that, taking additions. So it is happening in that group and then they bring that back to their staff meetings and their committees. Just add on to that, so you know, we, we use a template, it's called the Seven Forms of Bias. We run a lot of our resources through that, so it's making sure that it's telling voices of all students. So that is socioeconomic, gender, race, you know, social emotional. So it's making sure that it's not excluding someone. So that's something that we implemented about two years ago and we're getting better with that. So we constantly are looking at that when we're bringing in structural materials and resources. So that's a big piece that we've used that's across all of the SAU.
That sounds great.
So anything new at this point coming in through the schools is kind of going through that filter?
Yeah. The, the teachers are really good, they share. I mean, when we do have common PD time or we get content area conversations going, they use it. So I just met with the social studies committee today and we talked about, what are you using? How are you using it? Talked about the challenges, the barriers. Oh, I wouldn't use that, this became better. So we, we do that with, we have four different content area groups, I think, being right now. So if a lot of that discussion is about what are we using that can be consistent and it's going well, and then what's a barrier that we can break down?
Yeah, I was thinking about the Ellis Island projects and how those might need to be changed or, you know, or just.
Drastically changed.
Opened, yeah, yeah.
And, and some schools are changing, you know, the district, you know.
Has that already started?
Yes.
Great.
There's some schools that did something different last year, this year, you know.
Oh, that's awesome.
And like the conversation, working with the curriculum coordinators and the teachers who have questions and.
We even tripped at ours last, the mission project.
Awesome. Yeah, we haven't done it yet this year, so I haven't seen my third grader through yet.
I'm Kensington resident right now.
I was looking at Andy, cause he also has a third grader in the class. Um, that's, that's great. So yeah, I'm, I'm, this is such a better idea of what, of what the resources are and how they're being utilized. So, I guess I was wondering, you know, how often do you get to visit each of the schools? But in addition to that, you're also, you've, you're, you're kind of giving certain teachers in each school higher level of training so that they can provide resources. You're kind of delegating that, but then also available. And if you have those meetings regularly, then that does provide people an opportunity to say, hey, you know, now that I'm in the room with you, I never got around to emailing you, but now I can ask you, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah. That's true. And then also one, one other update I want to give is, so the SAU SUCD Anti-Discrimination Task Force, we've been working for the past year to draft up a protocol that when incidents, bias, discrimination happens in your schools, the steps you will take.
That's great.
Part of that protocol is the pre-work, part of it is what you're doing when it happens and then after.
Yeah.
You know, when, when incident happens, like how do you, like educational opportunities, your sort of justice practices for whoever did the harming, making sure we're taking care of the person who got harmed and so on. So that, that's a process that we're working on now. And that team consists of stakeholder, all different stakeholders. So you have caregivers and parents in the community, you have assistant principals from all the different levels, elementary, middle, and high. You have students from the high school. You have central office staff there. So it's a group of 15 people that have been working on this. And then also each of those identities have to touch one of the district towns. So that's also representative of that space. So it's pretty cool what's been happening and we think by the end of this year, we'll have a, a great protocol to, to put out there as a, as a draft and a date to everyone to see if this could work and so on.
That's awesome.
And of course, it's gonna look different for elementary, middle, and high because all the schools have different steps they take and also have different kinds of teams. You know, some schools have justice teams, some schools have behavioral teams. So it's gonna look different, but the steps will, will, will be used, going to look the same. And they're all being looked at to win equity grants.
So then that protocol will eventually be incorporated into the JICK policy, I'm assuming? Or will there be a new policy or?
Uh, no, it, it's, the policy says that we have to have a, a, a protocol to deal with discrimination. So that would be part of it.
The policy already says it, okay.
Policy already says it, yeah.
And then would that information be available anywhere? Cause it's, if it's not written, if the protocol, will the protocol be, I guess, will the language of the protocol be added to that policy so that people can read it?
There'll probably be like a hyperlink to it. So if you want a policy, you click on it, you'll find the protocol, it'll be on. But all of it will be, people will have access to it. And part of putting out the, the policy with the new language and then also a new protocol is gonna be a lot of education. So we want to make sure that we're providing space for community members to ask questions and understand it for educators who are gonna be using the protocol now to understand it as well and so on. So we're, we're thinking of all that as like a rollout plan.
That's great. Sorry, I have so many questions. So the Anti-Discrimination Task Force, where can people find out about that and what they're doing? Is that, is there like a place online where they talk about that?
No, no. That's just, I give update meetings at the joint board, like, I mean, in, in the notes. That's where I would put information about the task force.
Okay, and then are there opportunities, can we have opportunities for like town hall discussions kind of a thing? Like I, I.
So I would have to go back to the task force. One of our community norms is that we don't say, but I can bring the idea to them. Say, hey, this is something one of the boards want to do. Are y'all down for that? And if they agree, then some students will come, some of the educators will come, you know, but we agree that we would make all those decisions at school. But I can bring the, the, the ask and the idea to them.
Yeah, I just, um, just, just because I think for people who are, even think to pay attention and ask what's going on and look up that information, they can find it. But for those who don't, they hear, you know, a quick sentence about what something is and then they're, they're, they don't really understand the context behind it. So like, I'm thinking, to my mind, community outreach and public education about what it is you're doing and what you're not doing and what you want, you know what I mean? All of that stuff does need to be out there and, and made very available.
Yeah, yeah, and we plan on doing that once we have that.
That's great.
We like, but that's been part of our conversation.
That's awesome.
Get the community involved and make, make sure people understand.
Perfect.
If I don't have my policies mixed up, I think part of what you're talking about is actually embedded in with one of those. It's hard to see what you're talking about tonight. AC tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, our policy is.
Great. Did you have any questions? I would love to open this up if you guys are okay with that, if anybody here has any questions.
I mean, it's still public comments, so.
Oh, I do. This is great, thank you.
Is that okay with, is that okay with, is that okay with you guys?
Oh.
We're small enough.
No, no, you're good.
You give me the pies.
No, 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 you're good.
Into the basement floor, but. All right, so you're drafting a protocol for incidents that occur. Are these incidents being tracked as far as the numbers? Do you have amounts per school?
Yeah, yeah.
Time, things like that?
Yeah, so Alma, uh, which is the, the platform we use, allows us to collect that, that data. You know, when an incident happens, they go in there and they put that in there and they tag it as either bias. And that's what we can pull, like incidents that happen will cover. So we're still working on like more tags of what kind of bias it will be, but that's easy. You know, it's, it's contacting the Alma and working on, so we are collecting it. Before Alma, it was harder to track that, I would say. So I'm happy that we're doing this now. Before, it was, you know, me writing things in a notebook, you know, every time someone called me or. But now it's more accessible for educators to want to put their reports in.
Will those be publicly available at some point?
Uh, I think.
And the numbers, the numbers, of course.
The numbers, yeah. I, I think the numbers should be part of reports and then we'll, I, I think do it in the future. That, I, I think we should have the numbers in the, in the reports. Probably not the specific incidents or where it happens, but as, as a district, this is how many homophobic incidents we have, this is how many racist incidents, you know, classist incidents. I think that should be part of it so the community can be aware of what's happening in our, in our district.
And hopefully they trend in the direction of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And part of it too is, what I understand is that when this protocol, when the new protocol comes out and this new policy comes out, that we will see higher numbers. Doesn't mean they were not higher before and I think that's what we gotta prepare for is that the numbers will be had, cause people now have this thing, this, this protocol to use, this, this policy that's supporting and saying, you know. So we will, we will see higher numbers, but that doesn't mean that those numbers are higher than before, you know, it's because.
Now we're actually capturing.
Yeah.
And then paying attention.
Yeah.
That's great.
So another thing is, a lot of the work that you've described sounds very bottom up from the teachers to you, you as a resource.
Yeah.
And what is the, what are the incentives for teachers to actually go to you? Like, why would Shannon want to change her, aside from her own personal? If, if it's just her, her heart, it's bullying her.
Yeah.
That's cool, but I know that doesn't apply to every teacher in the district. So what's, what's, is it you guys? Are you leaning on the teachers to make them dig into DIJ?
Oh, I can, I can answer it. Our goal is to build leadership capacity in this work. So that one person has to do it for 4,500 kids and 1,100 employees. So he's our expert. Now, we do go to and if there's really significant incidents, Andres would be called. Then he has gone to elementary schools to work through, work through with teachers. Hey, I'm really struggling with this. He has done one offs, but we are, how we build that capacity in our building so that Shannon can go to Kelsey or Becky or Sheri and be like, hey, I'm, I'm struggling with this and they can be that support for her right there. That way we build better capacity in our building. So it's not just one person, it's 100 people doing it. And next year it's 200 and so on and so forth. So that is the way that we want to grow this work out. With Andres being that kind of that seed, just blossom with everybody else.
Gotcha.
And, and just thinking in this building, I think we've always tried to create a building where this was a safe community for all kids and all learners. And so I think the work really just matches and mirrors what we're trying to do in this building anyway. I think we're just maybe looking at it in a different thoughtful way of what does that mean? All, all learners, everyone has a safe place in this school. So I think for us, it fits into our mission of what we're doing and what we've been doing for a long time.
Yeah, and, and we, we provided, last year, we provided a community conversation that was open to everyone in the district. It was hoping that it was open to educators and then district wide PDs as well. We, we did four of them last year and we have one coming up. And so I, I think that's like the way of doing from like, this is what we value. Every student feel like they belong. We want every student, no matter what, they need to be successful in our schools. And this is how we get there. So that message is being given, you know, supporting diverse equity inclusion justice in our district. And then teachers want to reach, you know, like it's, it's, I, I don't think we're gonna maybe go tell teachers they have to do it, you know.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, no, no, I, I understand what you're saying, yeah. But it's, we are there as a resource. And I have a, you know, email me, give me a call and I come right over. Even if it's just a copy, if they want to buy me a coffee. Yeah, yeah.
All right, I guess if I can just squeeze in one more. How are you guys tiptoeing around spur of his complaints from divisive, divisive concepts law and things like that? Is that, are they coming up? Are, are complaints being filed? And how are you, how are you teaching the material around all that? Cause that's such a, you know.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, understanding the law and making sure that we're following it, that's, that's one piece. And I, and I work with the educators as well around that, like making sure this is. And, and the other part is that we were never doing that in the first place. So, so it was put out and people got scared, like, oh, that's your children. Was I doing that not knowing? Cause they got put out so big. So just working with, with the teachers. You weren't actually doing that before. Your slides were perfectly fine, the lesson you were teaching was perfectly fine. Maybe change this word or how you say it, but you know, you're not breaking the law. So I think that's, that's like guidance that way. And I'm connected to the other DIJ directors across the state. So we meet weekly, you know, and we talk about the stuff that's going on and what advice they're getting and what advice their legal teams are giving, you know, and we, we talk about that. So that's how we troubleshoot things as well. But we really haven't had anyone that, that I know of breaking the law. You know, we've been following it. But I think that's, that's the big pieces, like it coming out with not much guidance. It just, you know. And, and I've, I've read it over and over. Sometimes I sit here and read it over and over, make sure, for every PD, I do, for every question, like I'm looking over it over and over to make sure, nope, we didn't, we're not breaking that. Nope, we're good. We're good. Yeah.
Thank you so much for, for letting us.
No, they asked.
Thanks. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much for coming.
All right, cool, no, thank you Andres for the invite and sorry I have to leave. I'm going to my baby. She's teething right now.
Oh.
I didn't go to six o'clock, four o'clock this morning.
Let's see where Grandma.
Yeah, sorry guys, I gotta bring that, get your work something to help. The ground, what are we eating?
Okay, let's see. All right, so let's go back to the minutes. Yeah, okay. So we're looking at the January 11th public minutes. All right. Does anybody have any, did anybody have any updates to those or amendments?
I don't have any updates, Jen. There was something under section 4.1 that covers the policy committee messaging last time around that I don't think that we need to change, but I do wanna maybe spend a second on before we go into this round of policies, cause I think that could be an edit made to the suicide prevention and response policy.
To the policy or to the wording of it in the minutes?
To the policy itself. The wording of it in the minutes should be fine, it just made me think about.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right. So we can talk about that during the policy part?
Yep, exactly.
That sounds great, thanks. Um, the only thing I wanted to ask Becky about under 4.3, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, Principal Ruhl handed out survey results and feedback that was echoed, was having fewer half-days and more full-days off. There were 104 survey responses. I didn't know if maybe we should add in something about how it was overwhelming that people also wanted Fridays, just so that it's written down somewhere.
Yeah, it was.
I mean, I know you sent out an email to him.
Yeah, it was about 93% of the responses voted for Fridays.
Okay, cause I know you didn't say that, so I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Do we need to revisit that? Did we say we were gonna do something about?
We just didn't change the last one, but I think we changed the rest.
We didn't change the rest of it, we were able to come back and revisit it. And I think that may be more problematic than it's worth for the rest of this year just with things that are already scheduled and field trips and. All right, my bad, so.
Okay, that, I wanted to make sure we was, cause I thought we said we could revisit that, yeah.
Well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, so it was 93, it was like 92.7 or something. It was just, I, 93% said Fridays.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, the only other thing I had under the principles report, it was, um, I know what the intent was, cause we, I was writing about, um, the senior joy and then cultural passport. I'm just not exactly sure it was actually captured, um, in the background, cause it said cultural travel learning opportunity in kindergarten and.
Oh, there was cultural travel learning opportunity in kindergarten and first grade?
I think that was maybe the holidays around the world?
Yes, that's what I think.
Okay. And then it was the senior joy event. I don't know, it just says visit from seniors, which just kind of sounds like some seniors randomly showed up at the school.
Yeah, so we. Some must have remembered this game until it just got off, though, like a surprise.
It was a terrible idea, but.
All right, so.
Maybe if we could just hygiene up the language of the senior joy event and, um, the holidays around the world, that it was kindergarten through second grade?
Yeah.
Um, and then it was the fourth grade, um.
Healthy friendships.
It was the girls lunch bunch with Ms. Escalin that did the flyer. So I just would like a little more.
A little more detail?
Yeah, that's okay. Just to represent that, um, a little clearer.
All right, so we probably have to hammer up that language now, huh?
Yeah, unless you want to take, want to bring it back, but.
Let's, so, so, so we can just say, Principal Ruhl reported students had a visit from the seniors during their senior joy event and, you know, in between comments.
Yep. During that story is, I think, um.
And then there was cultural travel learning opportunity in kindergarten through second.
Second.
And the fourth grade girls lunch bunch. Made a flyer.
Created a sandwich.
Created a flyer on healthy friendships, healthy relationships.
Pamphlet?
Pamphlet.
I think it's technically a pamphlet, I was starting to think of the word, I'm like. Tinfoil, bi-foam, that stuff and, yeah, the pamphlet, there it is.
The words in there, no, we're moved.
Thank you.
All right, great.
And Desa has two S's on the second one, it does.
Okay. All right, so, uh, any other alterations? Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we accept the, is it, hold on. These are long. January 11th Public School Board Meeting Minutes as amended? Or approve them, I guess? Go a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then we would do the January 11th non-public minutes, which are.
I can make a motion check for you, please.
Okay. Yep, all second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There it is, okay. All right, so, just make sure. Yeah, that's it, okay. So, um, since it occurred to me after I had started the thing, since we had let Anders go first, should we now let Molly go? Distracted dinner with kids, she can, this is, you're out of the night, you're out of fun. She's here, all right? Yeah, that's true, that's true. We already lost 30% of our audience.
But you could be at home by yourself.
The call, like, that is the most amazing.
Imagine.
What do you do, I sign on the middle?
Oh, I very much do. All right, so then let's move on to committee reports. Um, so the policy committee?
All right, so before we go into this round of policies, I did want to address something that came up in the last meeting. Um, I had mentioned within JLDBB Suicide Prevention Response that one of the new regulatory requirements is that there needed to be a lifeline number of student ID cards. KES doesn't have student ID cards. I brought this question back to the policy committee and I believe it's in sixth grade when ID cards start becoming something that students need.
Got it.
So in terms of the policy, I think we have a couple of options. The policy itself, down to. Um the policy itself, down towards the bottom, section E is the part that I that highlights anything for student I D cards. I think we can either leave it as is and just know that it doesn't apply to K E S students, or we can take it out.
Well, can we just say starting in sixth grade?
Well, that wouldn't cover our policy.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying. Well, then I think we should take it out, because it it doesn't apply to us.
Would there ever be a chance where we wouldn't have student I D cards, I guess I'm thinking like.
Okay.
They have, well, I'm just talking through, like, if they, if we had cards printed, like, for the lunch program and they had to use their card to buy lunch or like checking out a library, like, we don't have those right now, but could. If we ever, if we ever had cards.
So maybe we would say if there are cards. Oh, okay, so you weren't saying that the original intent of the policy is that starting from sixth grade, you were saying that only in sixth grade from there on up, they have I D cards, so therefore it's not something that we do.
Yeah. Exactly.
But if we did have I D cards.
Yeah, so when you're looking at this policy, you might think this is, okay, this is a Kensington policy.
Right.
It's been in elementary schools, but you get to that part of it and you realize that you hit a dead end.
Yeah, we all know that.
Don't need student I D cards.
Yeah.
So it could be just that, you know, you have something that points to a dead end, maybe at some point in the future, if it becomes something the school wants to implement, then we have that requirement there. Or we could simply remove it and update it whenever we need it to.
Well, I'm in favor of clarity, so I don't like the idea of just leaving it as is, because people will ask the same question we asked, which is, wait, do we have student I D cards? So can we ch- can we change the wording just to say if students at the school have. I D cards, then the number must be printed on them. Or something like that?
Yeah. Yeah.
What'd you say?
I'm looking at Chris, if I hit it that way.
Yeah, I don't know if you, yeah.
Is that like, is that?
Yeah, you could certainly put it that way.
So, so if I D cards are issued to students.
Yes.
Just pull that one up.
I mean, you could probably lead right into the to the section. Some language that would state like if students have I D cards, and then you move into it.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
All right, so, so we are, we're changing that now. Do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we amend or that we approve the amended suicide prevention and response policy. To accommodate a change that suggesting that if students have. Uh I D cards, that they meet the requirements of the policy.
Okay, all second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So just so I can read this, if you're comfortable, the national suicide prevention lifeline shall be labeled on student identification cards and include the telephone number if they are issued by the school. The capture.
If I Ds are issued by the school, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or or we can put that right in the front. You know, like, uh so student identification cards, like, start off with if.
Student identification cards?
Yeah, like that same exact language.
At the beginning.
I like to start it out, I think it'll work.
Yeah.
All right, I'll add that there. And who is it, remind me of, who who put the motion first?
Me.
Josh did.
Uh, second, thank you.
I seconded it.
All right, cool, I'll get that done.
Thank you.
Okay, miss Chris, yep, good catch.
All right. Now back to the real. The real meat and potatoes. So nine policy changes this month, have six of them that are revisions and then three that are new. Most of the nine are really updated to reflect changes in regulation. Uh the first policy, policy A C nondiscrimination, equal opportunity, covered that a little bit or talked about it indirectly through what Andres was mentioning. And section or part four within Heather's write-up speaks to that. That requirement of the policy. And it's it's mentioning that there needs to be a framework for developing a coordinated plan.
Got it.
And when you look at the policy, you'll see it in red line, you'll see that uh that requirement that. That that part of the the policy needs to go to the board and there needs to be, um you know, that that type of focus or input on it.
I really appreciate this presentation that Heather has put together, please.
Yeah, it's extremely helpful, yeah, I agree.
Fantastic, yeah.
Um so so that again is a revision, the first five or so are revisions. Non-public sessions. Provides more guidance around the requirements for non-public meetings. Something that is updated within this policy is to note that the superintendent or designee is allowed to participate in non-public sessions. So long as that non-public session does not focus upon that superintendent or designee. That I don't know if, it's called out within the policy now, I didn't realize that. Or that to me was was a notable item that uh you know, I thought was interesting coming from this policy change.
Is it a can or has it a right to?
It's a it's a may.
Okay.
So, you know, if, thinking about Chris here, Chris wouldn't have to be at the policy or at that meeting, but could be in the event that we wanted him to or he wanted to as well. Next policy, airmar- water quality, we talked about this one not too long ago, it was recently amended to include some details around water quality. One of the new requirements that is dictated by law states that there has to be water bottle filling stations. I talked with Chris earlier, I do believe that we have two here on site, so we're gonna change that. Not a whole lot to say about crisis prevention, or at least items that I thought were notable, again driven by new regulation. Fire and hazard, fire and all hazard drills includes a little bit more detail than what was in there previously. There's now a requirement spelling out that there needs to be six fire drills and four all hazard drills during the course of the year.
All hazards are like other chemicals, stuff like that?
Yeah, or reverse evacuations or lockdowns or things like that.
Okay. Oh, okay, this is amazing, I didn't know if it was like fire and like just things like fire or like, okay.
Yep, there it is.
Yeah.
It's broad, you know, good.
Next two are new policies, bomb threats. Fairly basic, stating that there's an expectation that no employers can shall make a bomb threat, and it also iterates the criminality of making a bomb.
A bomb or a bomb threat? A bomb.
Making a bomb, yeah.
Why do we have? Thank God we have that written down finally.
I know.
What?
This this is all very educational and interesting to me.
I'm sorry, like dark humor, like.
I don't think it's killing me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, I was.
I know.
Yeah, why? You know, I have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Pauseing system.
I know, I know, trust me. Uh buildings and ground security, another new policy. It talks about the responsible parties for the building and ground security. And within the policy, we have identified the superintendent as that responsible party.
Little question that I had for this, and it's more of a smaller school, um if you look at bullet. Second from the last. A school district employee must be on school grounds during an activity being conducted by unauthorized school or community group.
Oh, yeah.
So that that would apply here, because you have rec in the in the gym, so another smaller school took that out.
Okay.
Uh because they want still have the ability for their rec department to be able to do that, not to have to have uh a custodian or a.
Yeah.
The the principal or school president.
Well, but the second, the second. Is are you are you looking at the sixth one though, because the second sentence is only a school district employee will be allowed to open and close the school in the event of such an activity, is that how it is currently? Who opens the school on weekends?
Usually K E.
What which which bullet are you on, I'm sorry?
Bullet six, a school district employee must be on school grounds during activity being conducted by unauthorized. Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, so then the second might, but that makes sense to me that somebody doesn't have to be here, but does that mean that we're giving the keys away to people who don't work here?
Yes.
Okay.
Um but they are controlled, like at their their keys only open the buildings at the time that we designate the key can open the building.
Great, okay.
And we have to make the decision for them to use the building, so.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, with assigned the building use form.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm like pointing out that like, it's not like it's trying to bully me, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. Okay, great.
I'm comfortable with taking that out.
I I am too, that's why I was just asking, because if it was the case that somebody was here every time, then we would need to keep that in, but if it's not, then that's fine, yeah, let's take it out.
Yeah.
I mean, it is a school district employee managing those keys. Yeah, I'm probably better just take it out.
Yeah, okay.
Because that would happen anyway.
Just take the motion.
If we're taking it out, this is what exists currently?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Of course, it's a new one, no, this is a new one?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so then we don't need to, we would need to just, we we just take that out, and then we will eventually approve that one.
Yeah.
No, that's.
Okay. Noneducational surveys is a revised revised policy. Policy itself focuses on surveys to students, sets forth the requirements um that are that are needed in order to distribute something that's non-academic. And then finally, a relatively short policy at the end, relations with police authorities. This would apply if we decided to get a resource officer and the policy itself. Provides some guidelines around what that relationship between the school district and the resource officer should look like.
Okay.
But it's it's that's another may, so.
It's it's written as a may, yeah.
A mean one, but if you do have one.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
What kind of surveys are they talking about, like the climate survey or? This this one read to me, like like Desa?
Okay. And we we do have, we send the letter out prior to the desis seeking.
Yeah.
Parents that want to opt out.
I was just wondering what it's talking about, like, what is the, okay, okay. All right, great, so um are we approving? These are.
I mean, to me, I don't think that there's any reason to go through a second read with all of these, so I would suggest a.
Right, yeah. I'm comfortable.
I think that we should approve them all.
Okay, great, so are you two, we're doing them separately?
Can do all they got if you want, just.
So, all right, so I'll move that we accept policies A C, B E C, E B B D. Uh E B C A, E B C B, E B C C. E C A, I L D, K L G, one of those was amended though.
E C A.
E C A as amended, I L D, K L G.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Possible.
That was a lot, okay. Safety and secure, thank you, Josh, that's you, that's still, it's a lot of, a lot of work you're carrying.
It's gonna be another batch next one, another another nine or so that will come through then too.
Uh safety and security. I mean, I was only, I I was only there for the last ten minutes, so. So it's not a full-length meeting and I was, I had to.
Okay.
Yeah, you have a quick highlight, thank you, was there too, we had really good representation from our first responders, fire police, really grew.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, that's.
Uh it was really Rich just talking about our plans and updating our plans and the the requirement that came out in policy. Uh talked about uh Nibida and the work that Nibida is doing and having uh threat assessment teams throughout. Nibida is your national association for behavior and threat assessments, which we are part of, we have four teams in S A U sixteen. Two at the elementary school and then two at the secondary level, um so we meet, we actually meet tomorrow for the one that I help supervise. We look at kids and that's becoming a priority, uh we wrote in the legislation, so we're much ahead of the curves, we just talked about that and the training that needs to be necessary. Uh and then Rich just talked about working with building principals for tabletops or other exercises and then uh some of the emergency plans he needed to update to get to the state, so that was the majority of the meeting, just our plans, what we're doing and and talking through.
There was a rich conversation around the recent um hoax threat as well, and just kind of some of the troubleshooting that came out of that and how can we do better next time and and it was nice to have law enforcement at the table to be able to help talk through that as well, so.
Exactly.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh superintendent evaluation committee, we haven't met, but um we're uh Melissa was finalizing the goals and is passing those out to to Dr. Ren. So. Um we, oh, actually, yes, and it was decided that we would start. We're gonna kind of shift uh the process of this, so so typically, this year has been all kinds of whacked out, so so typically. The superintendent would, we would have approved the goals at the beginning of the school year, um there's been some back and forth on those this year, uh but. The uh plan now is to actually start working with um superintendent elect with uh Dr. Asbell. Before, like this spring, and start working with her on what she wants her goals to be and then have those locked down before school starts. Yeah, way more sense.
Yeah.
Way more sense, and then and then I think um I think they were talking about maybe meeting with her just somewhat regularly, just to see how, just checking in, basically, so. I think that's gonna be a great uh way forward. Kensington School Study Update, we have still not yet met, but hope to soon, I think we're still looking for a date, right?
Part of us today thought that it was March eighth. I maybe somebody made that up.
I think we do have it in the thread, I'm just not sure with the dates. Because I think in my head, I thought it was like two weeks ago, I don't know.
Still about, it's from me.
I don't have a. While you're looking that up, can I go off um?
Please.
Schedule for a moment, okay, great, well, because Jenny's part of the committee, anyway, so Jenny, being your last um meeting with us here. Um I can't imagine um a more challenging three years to be a school board member um between.
Oh.
Just just the year of COVID probably would have been enough for anyone to serve one year, but you stuck through all three years of your term. I so appreciate it, your support of our little school in these last three rather tumultuous years in public.
They sure were.
Yes, they sure were, and yet here you still sit with a smile on your face and we just, we really appreciate your service to our students, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, yes, it's been quite an honor, I really, really mean that. So, thank you, I'm quite sad to leave, actually, but.
You can say it.
We've got, we've got somebody capable coming, coming.
We don't have four, right, that is, we're three around.
But, yeah, I hope to come back, thank you very much, it's been incredible and extremely educational in a lot of ways. So, thank you. All right.
Did you find the date of our next meeting?
I did, I don't have it in my calendar, doesn't mean that's not correct, so keep searching.
I don't know, someone thought March eighth and then several of us were like, wait, March eighth, and so now like four of us have it in our calendars, March eighth.
All right, maybe later tonight I'll just send out a, an email and just say, hey, how about March eighth, let's finalize it. Yeah, all right, sounds good. Okay, uh where am I, general correspondence?
We have nothing.
Okay, um the S A U Communications and Community Engagement Committee is planning a meeting soon.
Yeah, who's the committee reps for us, am I in there?
It was me.
Was you?
It will be, it will not be me, it was going to be me.
I thought we were gonna, how could that be a committee?
Oh, no, I.
No, it is, because um, oh, so in the joint board meeting.
I think it might be short, but.
Yeah, they they um they uh presented, Kim Meyer brought a um presentation from an audit firm.
Yeah.
That talked about auditing the communications and that is a decision that will be made um by the committee, is is who to go with and and.
The table.
How to go forward with that.
I'm surprised it's not a joint board decision.
It was presented to the joint board, I will, that was one of the things that was discussed, should it be, I I think, but I think it was generally speaking. It was just decided to be a committee thing, but they're gonna be going through.
Committee for committees, okay.
To me, it seemed like the committee would be focused on looking at that audit, making a determination if we want to move forward with it or not. And then also thinking about, you know, anything connected with that audit, like, you know, thinking about how we need to implement it, are there special things we want the audit to look for? Et cetera, but I I mean, I think boxing.
I mean, I think it will eventually be a joint board decision, whether to pay for it.
Yeah, and to, I mean, the audit itself, based on what I saw in that meeting, is everything that we want it to be.
Anything you could ever want it to be, yes.
If we were to say no to this audit, we would be back.
We would think that.
At square one.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we would be back to square one trying to figure out like just communications.
So so some people were asking, well, are there other bits kind of a thing, but but I think that this particular company specializes in educational.
Can't flash one.
Communication audits, and they did have, um there were a lot of uh examples in the in the presentation, I can run that to you. Oh, it was in the, it was in the um packet for the. uh examples in the in the presentation. I can run that to you. Oh, it was in the, it was in the um packet for the last joint board meeting. Along with um, I mean, some of their school districts have like a hundred thousand kids in it, a hundred ninety, I think one of them had a hundred seventy or a hundred ninety thousand kids.
Yeah.
Um, and there were links to the actual audits.
Okay.
And uh also email addresses of people, people wanted to
Okay.
contact them and say, how did this go for you? You know, that kind of thing.
Okay. Sometimes I just go crazy and like, could we just make a decision then?
Yeah.
Why is it easier?
Well, it's it's a, it's a, it's expensive. So it's not something that.
And it was.
Yeah, they they wanted to make sure that they were really like, is this the best way to do this?
Yeah, and it was proposal overview of what it might look like. We'll talk about it in the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm thinking that that communications me, uh, committee meets in the interim and then at the next joint board meeting, there's a decision and it's done.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's that was what I got from that. Is that, you too?
That's. That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's helpful in my commitment.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, I don't think it's gonna be a long thing. I think that the, I mean, I might, that was my understanding is that if we have.
It was kind of our hope that it wasn't gonna be long, that we come to a decision and work with with Esther coming in on what that would look like and can we do an audit and from that audit, we'll get ideas of what we need to do next.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, pretty, pretty cut and dry.
Yeah.
And Allison, if you, if uh, you know, if it's me and you that do that or, you know, I think.
Yeah, I don't really make sense.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, we'll have to.
We need.
Yeah.
We're out.
It goes with shovels.
Yeah.
Alright, um, moving on to bus- business and financials.
Right, so.
How about the signs and manifests?
Yes, I love them. Right, we have, you designed them, you said?
Yeah, right.
Um, so in the board pack is the current year financial. So what I did is I put in what matches your financial. So we are getting reimbursement from um North Hampton. Um, and so it is showing as an expense right now until you get the money back and I can relieve that expense. Okay.
Okay.
So what I did is I put what the changes are from the prior month to match your financial and then the amount we would be asking North Hampton to choose your financials.
Okay.
So the big thing is uh we start needed to add more money for fuel oil. So if you remember, like fuel oil.
Or like. Uh-huh.
So if you remember at la- at the end of last year, we we made a prepayment to make room in this year's budget. Uh, we've blown through that and we need to add more. Um, so fuel is just a lot more expensive.
Yes, it is.
So that is the big driver of the changes from the prior month. Um, I don't know if anyone had any questions on any of the other items.
Molly, is that, is any of that information coming from the summary page on on third year? Is that, or what you're talking about, just line items that are within the details?
Uh, so the, are you're you're looking at this sheet right here?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the changes from the prior month. So last month, um, in the January board pack, there was fifty eight thousand and now there's twenty thousand. Is that the one you're looking at?
Yep.
Yeah, so those are the changes that we've made since the last month.
I see, okay.
And so we.
Like I see that fuel oil encumbrance number up there.
Yeah. So we've added a fuel oil encumbrance to hopefully get us to the end of the year. So it's, this is, this is, this is not only actual expense, it's adding encumbrances as well. So if we know there's a known expense coming,
Mm-hmm.
um, we added an additional amount for fuel. Was twenty thousand.
Did we switch banks?
Yes.
We did switch banks.
Okay.
To TD. And we are actually earning a lot more interest on it, which is, I don't know.
Great.
Um.
Oh wait, I stole your pen.
So then hopefully once we, we did send uh the boys to North Hampton or just waiting on the payment box. There's no question. Um. Chris might be the better answer. I mean.
What did you ask?
I don't have, I don't have the money in hand yet, but I was, I, the chances of, she's asking the chances of North Hampton paying us and I believe it's very good.
Yeah, it's it's negotiated. We have a, we have a, I'm all you.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Yeah, I think we had paperwork around that, right? Yeah, okay, that's more what I was asking. Okay, I was like, right, there's no like, hey, hey,
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Very well tracked. No.
A good, good face that you're gonna be, so, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We we have uh quarterly meetings, if not, uh needed before that and the work that Molly and her team did behind the scenes to make sure with Dr. Bennett, it's very well done.
Okay. So the plan is we've sent um the first bill and then we'll be setting up an encumbrance or. So does anyone have any questions?
No, thank you. Wanna stay in party with us or are you gonna go home or?
I might enjoy some silence for a hot second.
Sorry, what was that?
Silence.
Yeah.
Oh.
My room is cold and I would just sit on my couch and maybe not even turn on the lights and I would just.
Um, alright, so it's time for the principal's report.
She's just putting off the, I think your data, so I don't know if you wanna move two letters to the meeting.
Okay, just. Yeah. Yeah, so the letters. We add. Okay, so so for for the thousands of folks watching from home, um, every year, the third grade does the greatest project in the world and it's the best part of being on the school board. Um, we get, oh, I just went all the way up to the top. The third graders write to the school board and ask us, I mean, and um they're persuasive letters. And sorry, I got distracted by a thing and so now I'm, I'm thinking about how I'm distracted by this thing. Okay. Every year, the third graders write letters to the school board, persuasive letters, asking for a change they would like to see in the school. And um it's the greatest thing. We get, we get requests all the way from like, can we have shovels to can we have a new football stadium?
It has to be a change that would benefit everyone.
It has to be changed to benefit everyone.
What does that even mean?
Oh, yeah, that is the greatest one. The one where somebody wants one of those.
Yeah, right here.
So much to.
And my favorite part is that he was like, okay, we can do that. I could.
I I I agree with your.
I already like, that's on my Amazon, like, save for later.
It is.
Your child like to pump iron in the gym, so.
Yeah.
My kid wants extra time at recess.
That one is financially doable.
Extra time at recess?
That actually, I was gonna bring up the.
You actually have my letters, I think.
Oh, are they right there? Can I see them?
Yes, yes.
And I I had emailed you just about that one.
Yes.
Yeah, and you got it?
Um, I actually thought about the extra time at recess and I do, I don't know the ins and outs of your schedule and coverage time and time and seat and I know all those things are calculated, but for the school. What's, what do you call your, your detective, I don't know.
School.
I call it teacher club, but the school's.
The teacher club, yes, it's a, it's a study. I was like, I don't wanna call it the committee, it's not a committee. The study, I didn't know if that's another thing to maybe
The schools, the schools, yeah, yeah, yeah.
look at as far as extra time that could be used for collegial time. I don't know. So that was something that I thought was worth moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, and that's something that I believe has been asked for every year. Somebody's always asking for more.
It's the second recess, this specifically, like this student.
Specifically, the second recess.
This is related to me, yes.
This is a student who may or may not have been your daughter. So what else, what other, so yeah, that's.
So mine, I I summarized, they're all adorable and actually very themed for some reason. All but one of mine are about recess and about different, I can't see Becky.
That's why.
Um, about.
It's the most important part of their day.
It is. But actually, I thought what it, what the, what the theme was, they want something new or something else to do out there. So one student asked for weights and weightlifting. One student asked for bicycles to be added so they can ride on the track. One student asked for a spider web climbing thing. One student asked for the drums to be replaced with a slide. One student asked for lines on the soccer field, which I felt like that one was probably ruled.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, so anyways, I just thought that was interesting that it was kind of on theme that they are interested in maybe in the next couple of years having something new out there. Like in the Gaga pit, so.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I had one kid ask for, this is wonderfully specific, two dinosaurs that have steps that kids can climb on.
Yeah, 'cause trees aren't, we're not supposed to be climbing trees, so.
That's why, yeah.
I thought we needed dinosaurs.
Kids are climbing on trees and not listening, so they should climb on the dinosaurs instead. So that's, that's great.
Oh, that's. That's cool, yeah.
Specifically dinosaurs with steps.
Yeah, with steps.
Dinosaur with steps.
Very specific, yeah.
And I also had had another request that uh a child who may or may not have been related to me, asking for all of the KES kids to play together at recess sometimes, which has, that's something that has happened before, but doesn't always happen, but yeah, so that was the other recess, oh wait, I might have had a recess once, hold on.
Different years.
Mine was, yeah, so I had a request too, like a lot of recess or outdoor type asks.
In rakes.
But I had multiple that were focused on the soccer field or football field asking.
Rakes and.
Yes, we actually talked about that at PTO last night in redoing, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Get leveling, rehydraceding, having lines painted. So that's something the PTO is actively helping us to perhaps field some costs on.
Okay.
Okay. Hmm.
Awesome.
Um, part of that might have been a little bit talked about. Part of the grasses has died over the years, but um we haven't had a lot of snow and so the kids are trying to find creative ways to use all the shovels
It's. No.
and so there was a huge mud pit. I let them have at it with the shovels and the mud pit, which was tons of fun. Um, but now it's really starting to make soccer fields.
Yes.
Until soccer fields realize.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, yeah.
But like today, they they've, um, because we've got all these shovels now and no snow, so they've created a new theme of shovelball, which is sort of like broom ball and lacrosse combined. So I got these shovelball teams because.
Shovelball.
It's great. I love it. I mean, it's great.
That's fantastic.
But you can hold my child's stuffy while you play shovelball, so.
Because. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, that's the beautiful creative piece of.
I love it.
Of recess is.
Yes.
Yeah.
And just let them have at it and make your own game and.
Yeah, which is fantastic.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
There was also a, there's a request for a s- like swindly tube slide.
Hedgie's on the left. It's kind of small.
Um, and I also grasped, the grasp.
I mean, I have that one. Because it can't be properly supervised, which children do inside the closed tube that I can't see them. Oh, I see.
Yeah, actually, too.
Alright, we had one of those out there and it was removed.
Is that with the drums, are you now?
That's with the drums.
Oh, actually, and uh one child asked for, I really liked this one.
I just wanted with the sun shade that I thought was love over the picnic tables, which actually.
Yeah, can we have more trees? Oh, they wanted to plant trees and I I thought that was really cool and very doable idea.
More trees. Yeah.
I was like, let's, yeah, absolutely, let's plant trees.
That was, that was um.
Yeah.
There's something they can do with the shovels. Get them some trees, they can go dig holes.
Maybe you could have like memorial trees or something like that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we could make it a donation if it's a tree.
They still person does, yeah. Oh, yeah, that would be fun too.
They did, they have some, they have great ideas.
Um, also uh gym toys and rakes.
Gym toys, what does that mean?
Somebody who may or may not be related to an incoming.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for Josie, uh, oh, sorry, I wrote that. Uh, hold on. It was rakes and gym toys to use in gym. The rake's gonna be used to rake the leaves and the gym toys Mr. Scramble will use for the kids to play.
Hmm. I mean, why would we want that?
They're not gonna rake leaves at your hospital, rake yours.
That one might, I don't know.
Well, today I'm, I'm ca- I'm leaving school, I'm carrying eighteen hundred things. Can I get my children to carry things? No, thank you guys. Oh, you guys probably carry something for your mom, that'll take some of your.
Oh, I'm lost. I don't, I don't take, I don't, I, you bring it, you carry it, it's yours, that's my.
But all of this was her suggesting it. It was like, oh, yeah, that's probably what I should do. I'm glad the mom will like sweating. I only have one more that I thought was actually a very, very good idea and I have one child of my own who I know would be super interested in this as a robotics team.
Yeah. Yeah.
S- Yeah, so Ms. McCarthy is actually, I think that letter may have actually gone out today. Um, I do think it is geared for fourth and fifth grade students at the moment, 'cause that is part of what she's doing with the grant that we got.
Okay. That's okay.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah.
Well, and these kids will be in fourth grade next year.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I also know there was.
Second grade.
Yeah.
But then there was also, I also had a request for Spanish class.
Yes, and so I've worked with a couple different, I've worked with, one mom this year, we were trying to get um PEA, uh, will send students to
Oh, okay.
to do an after-school program. We couldn't coordinate that with the days they could get off of campus this, so we tried to do that this year and I know I've
Yeah.
talked with a mom in the past about trying to do that. I know there's definitely interest in the community of having some sort of language.
Yeah. Language is.
Yeah.
Option.
Well, yeah, and I I wasn't sure what the option would be, so I said, you know, it, well, we will certainly talk about it, but in the meantime, I know that this child does know some Spanish, so I thought maybe he could.
Run the club?
Yeah, teach, teach, teach some Spanish.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so the, okay, so some of these absolutely are doable.
Yeah.
I I, we're not really clear on exactly how we're gonna respond. I respond to each kid and basically say, thank you for your suggestion and may or may not be possible, we'll bring it, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, and I also like to focus on, anytime you have a question for the leaders in your community, you can always do this, 'cause that's really the point of this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Make your voice heard. Um, but in terms of, I would love for them to know that there are several things that we're gonna be actually looking into.
Yeah.
Um, is that something that we should be ready to them or can you bring that back and?
I, yeah, I can relay the message to them. They will be thrilled to hear that some of their things might be acted upon.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I did secretly look at some of your letters. Um, and we did, we, I did bring that field to the PTO uh last night when we had our meeting.
Yeah. That was a very, yeah, that was a very.
Yeah.
Repeated and concerned.
Yeah, they're, yeah. Yeah, they're in bad shape now.
Yeah.
It's time, it's time, it's time for them to.
Mm-hmm.
get a fresh, so so we talked with Rusty and, you know, the SAU has a lot of equipment we can borrow, so we're talking about, um, can we get some, absolutely donated, we have the equipment to do it and then the hydracery, so we're trying to see what we can have donated versus what we have the manpower to do with SAU equipment and.
That's great.
Does Harold ever help out with things like this?
Well, they have our landscaping contracts, so they do all of our mowing or Harold's for placement now. And actually Courtney Brady reached out to Ron, who took over um the landscaping company last night after the PTO meeting. So I already got an update from Courtney this morning. So he's gonna come and quote what it would be to to do the two fields.
Right.
I'd love to circle back with the kids on sort of their vision, because one of their requests actually had they wanted a very separate, does a football field, soccer field, kickball as three separate fields. Um, right now, football and kickball happen on the same field, so if we're really looking to separate that, redoing kickball would be very different if we're moving football to the other field. So maybe we need to come back with the kids on what exactly was your vision of three separate fields.
Yeah. I was, I was suggesting something about like temporary lines or some, some, something that they can put out there, markers. If they wanna change the purpose of the field, but I don't know.
But generally changes seasonally.
Yeah. Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, it's usually a football field in the fall and when it's rolling, rolls around in the fifth grade or start practicing for the fifth grade versus stop kickball game, it becomes a kickball field in the spring when the kids start practicing.
I see. Okay.
To try to beat us.
So if you could let them know that at least, I know my letters were written before this conversation. So some of them, some of them will be, well, I, I wrote them and I didn't, um, I.
Mine had already gone out, so. I already noticed.
I sent you the, I emailed you the game chart and that one, the other child one and then.
Oh, you did, okay, I'm sorry.
You know, we can circle back to these if you want.
Yeah.
You didn't actually give written yours yet, where I.
Oh, good, I figured. I was like, I'm gonna go something.
You can't give one kid a return letter.
No.
Yeah, and I'll be like, well, you don't have one.
I'm glad that you did, yeah. But I was like, if I don't send it back, I'll lose them, so.
That's not. Um, alright, so then the principal's report.
Yes.
Um, sorry, you're reading.
But no, I just recreated um your, our mid-year I buddy data.
Thank you.
Um.
Hi.
And so fifth grade um ended up on the uh the back, so there's just one tank on the back.
Oh, we should close public comments.
And so. So this is, these look very similar to the graphs I think I sho- or the reports that I showed at the very beginning of the year that had um sort of our, our overall growth from last year. Um, this is just mid-year. Um. And so again, the, either the end of the year, depending on when the June meeting hits or maybe the beginning of next school year, I'll show you the full year's trajectory that we, similar to what we had looked at. So I don't know which one you're looking at. First, I have the reading one first, which if you look at the top of, is this gonna be down? Let me just scroll on my reading. So we have, um, you know, kind of broken down by grade level. Um, not all of our kindergarten students take this assessment. Um, it does require a certain level of basic um sight word knowledge, so not all of our kindergarten students have that ability to really access this assessment yet, but those who could you know, really well, we have them take it. Um, so you see kind of where we are. Hmm, and nothing on this is surprising to me, um, as far as like where kids are meeting their grade level expectations mid-year.
Are things looking a little more typical like a, as they did pre-pandemic or are we still lagging?
We didn't use this assessment pre-pandemic, so this is, you can't, we can't compare this assessment to the star because.
Okay. Got it. Yep. It's not the same, yeah.
Yeah, it's not the same assessment. So we unfortunately started using this assessment during the COVID year.
Right, okay.
So we don't have a free COVID baseline.
Okay. I was just, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't.
COVID was our baseline.
Looks like we're lagging too much, so, okay, it's.
Yeah. Um, and then on math, um.
Oh, for kids.
And the other one, you can see, um.
Yeah.
Again, like just kind of where we are as far as proficiency and um, you know, overall placement towards towards that grade level expectations and. And obviously, like we, as teachers, we can drill down into these more, you know, we click on grade levels, click on specific students and we can drill down and each of the students we can see by domain, so we can see, um, we can drill down into the phonics domain a little more and see which students are appearing, you know, in that red part or that. domain, so we can see, um, we can drill down into the phonics domain a little more, and see which students are appearing, you know, in that red part or that yellow part, and we can drill down into the vocabulary piece and look, you know, more individually at students and, um, you know, what they need in their instruction, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thanks, nice to see that.
Great, yeah, yeah, I know it makes more sense when we get to the end of the year, you can kind of see the whole, like, where we started and where we finished. We are keeping track of how we're doing and looking at growth, I mean, that's the most important piece, um, you know, are the kids making it, yeah. Wonderful. We're great, um, yeah, and then I gave my, my report. I started with, um, just sort of wrapping up our cultural passport, which was such a fun night to have, um, our closing ceremonies, which we haven't been able to have in person altogether for several years, so it was really nice to um, have the kids have the opportunity to have the audience of their families to show all that they've learned about Greece over the last month or so, and all of their specials classes, so um, I know the kids were super excited, um.
It was an awesome event.
They really have, and that just was like a highlight of what they've learned, obviously, um, and I was just, and I was super proud of all the parents, I've got enough and danced at the end. I, I was sort of prepping the kids for like, well, mom and dad might not want to, or like, don't be, and like, we had a hundred and fifty people in the dance floor, so it was really
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Nice.
It was a lot of fun, and you can tell the kids were just super proud to.
They were.
Yeah, um.
That's really cool.
And, um, you know, our, our really good arts teachers have just done such a great job, and and we're saying them this whole, this whole month, everywhere they went. Yeah, so it was great. Um, and the team will start to meet this spring to determine, um, you know, where we travel to next year, we try to honor the heritage of a a family in town, and, um, the family, you know, within our K E S community, so we'll
Mm-hmm.
um, we always have choices, we've always, you know, even in our small little town, there's always, um, families that are willing to help share their, their culture and their heritage with us, so
Yeah.
we'll try to make that decision by the end of the year.
Um, do parents approach you about that?
Mm-hmm, they do. Yeah, yeah, I've had, um, I've had two parents approach me about next year, so, yeah.
That's great.
And, um, yeah, and sometimes we revisit countries that flags that are up there, you know, we'll circle back to them, um, if there's another family.
Okay.
So, we're not, it it's not out of the question to circle back to.
I was wondering this, I was looking at that list, I'm like, oh, okay, my my traditions are up there, represented.
Yeah, but, so we'll try to, I mean, we, we try to do something new, but, um.
That's fun.
Um, under meaningful learning, I was just, um, highlighting some of the things that we were doing this month with, um, block history month. Um, I highlighted some of the things that second grade was doing, um, they've had a lot of conversations about Martin Luther King Junior, and um, they've had a lot of great conversations, and then they were using, um, his life as a model in how to start writing biographies, um, which then sort of segued into what they're doing in third grade, and which choosing their own, um, person to research, and then and doing their own research, so they're sort of like doing it together in second grade, and then, um, you know, this year in third grade, moving on to, um, doing their own, but the kids, um, you know, they're really again, Andres was talking about how we do things developmentally at elementary level versus middle school level versus high school level, and um, just having some conversations with the kids, they really are starting to understand the importance of advocacy and making a difference, and um, you know, just that, that important piece of having voice, and, yeah, it's been, it's been fun. Um, and then, um, thinking about like the biographies that the third grade students are doing, um, again, this is where the beauty of combining content, we've got social studies and E L A competencies and I C N's merging together, so they're doing research with, you know, famous historical people, so, um, it's always makes more sense for kids when you can connect learning in some ways, so, yeah.
Yeah. Are, um, are you noticing, when you look at having worked with kids for your whole career, are you, are you noticing that there has been an increase in that understanding of the need for advocacy and and all of that, are you seeing more of that?
Um, I'm not so sure I see a difference necessarily in what, what we've always believed at school to be important, so
Right.
like, I think as teachers and educators, we've always encouraged kids to find their voice and
Yeah.
um, and be an advocate, but I do think there's maybe a greater sociable, um, awareness of that, that maybe is
Yeah.
more prevalent than what it used to be.
That's kind of what I was asking, are you, are you seeing that reflected in the kids now, and also just like the changes in
Yeah.
in the resources and the materials and and the focus and all of that, I'm, I'm curious to see if that's actually being reflected in the, in the kids, and how they treat each other, and how they talk about the world, and all that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal of what we always try to do with them in these conversations is to try to make the world a smaller place for them, like, and, um,
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
is, the world is a big place, but we're all sort of in this big, small place together.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense, um, and your, your voice is just as important to his, their voice, and.
Yeah. That's great.
Yeah. Um, and then under health and wellbeing, um, I was just highlighting some of the work that Nurse Heather and Mr. Scramble are doing, they're co-teaching health lessons right now together in the classrooms. Um, they've started with some body systems, digestive systems, that sort of thing, and with the little kids, they've done some basic hygiene things, and you know, making them wash and putting their hands under the, the blue lights to see how much, how many germs are still on their hands, and um, so that's been great that they can sort of tackle that as a team, um, and, uh, as we get closer into the spring, um, they'll shift those conversations of with our fourth and fifth graders into more puberty and body kind of discussions, and again, that's great for them to be able to do that as a team for our older students.
Yeah, yeah.
Great. I think the, um, Nurse Heather also sent out us more about that, so she let parents know that they're starting to talk about body systems and digestive, because I think sometimes children come home and say, what we talked about is not actually what we talked about.
Yeah.
I think she was trying to clarify that for some parents that might have been confused about the conversation at school.
That's great. Alright, well, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so, uh, old business?
Old business.
People related matters?
None tonight.
Personnel?
Oh, we, we hired, uh, somebody, oh, they'll be able to start in a couple weeks, but, um, we've been able to hire, uh, we have somebody, um,
Oh.
back in the kitchen helping a few days a week, we don't have that fully filled, but, um, uh, Karen Clark started with us.
What?
That was the one last month.
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Cause we could all been wondering, like, what happened, yeah, after you guys left, and, ooh.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so Karen Clark is with us now three days a week in the kitchen helping, and she's lovely, she's just jumped right in, and she's kind of lots of.
Great.
Also, Karen's quite an experience, and so that's been pretty seamless, so.
Great.
Yeah.
That's great. That's wonderful. Alright, uh, do we have any, do you need to go into non-public tonight? I don't have any.
I don't, I don't have anything for y'all.
No, okay, great, so our next meeting is March fifteenth, the day after the election.
Mm-hmm.
And I'll say thank you to everybody here, Chris, you especially, for all of the help that you've given me in the last three years.
Thank you. Great.
And Becky, you too. So, you guys have been fantastic to work with.
And a journey.
You were awesome, thank you for your time.
Yeah, that's awesome, thank you.
It's great, you guys are a great board, it's true.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, super okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, I'll move that we adjourn at seven twenty-one. Do I have a second?
Do we need to close the public?
I already did, I I slipped it in there, yeah.
Still in the slide.
Yeah. Alright, I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Hi. Do we have?